All right. Welcome to the Oregon Department of Aviation Public Hearing on our Oregon Administrative Rule 738-124 for the Aviation System Action Plan. If you would like to make a public statement, please use either the Raise Hand function or submit your name, city of residence, and any affiliation in the chat. And then we will open up your microphone and camera. And before we get started, I'm just going to go ahead and put up a quick summary of the changes that we made to the rules. So we made updates to five of the sections of the rules. The first one was just in the definitions and basically it was just some clarifying that DOJ suggested that we put in there. The next section was the Board Review and Project Selection. And we updated these rules to provide clarification and more cohesion between our Aviation Review Committee and recommendations and Board Approval Process for Core Grants. The next section is the Maximum Core Grant Award and Recipient Financial Matching Requirements. In this section, what we updated was we removed the option for grantees to apply for grants higher than the maximum award, which currently is $150,000. Previously, they were allowed to submit a hire request and the board could review and determine if additional justification allowed for funding a higher amount due to increased project costs and the amount of applications that we continue to get for the core program. We've decided to keep it at just the maximum $150,000 right now. And then the next section under the Core Program Administration, we updated a couple of processes regarding the closeouts of the grants. And just to make it a little more efficient, to make sure we have all the documentation that we need. And then the last section is the SOAR Program Updates. And the update to that was to change how those requests are reviewed and approved. The SOAR Program is different from CORE in that it is not an actual grant program. It is funding for our state-owned projects. And in the past, when these went through our Aviation Review Committee along with the core grant requests, there was some confusion with the ARC members as to why they were looking at these projects as they are merely just projects that the department is doing for our own airports. And so we decided it would be more appropriate to have those reviewed and approved by the board. And again, just the reasons for the updates overall were to update terms, grant and project administration processes, and then to clarify the state aviation board's ability to redistribute grant funding or reprioritize the core grant applications. All right, so again, if you would like to make a statement, use the Raise Hand function or the chat. And currently I see Becky has her hand raised. So Becky, I will go ahead and give you access to your camera and microphone. And before you make your comment, may I please have you state your full name, affiliation, and city of residence? All right, you should have access now. Are you able to unmute, Becky?
Yes, sorry about that.
No problem.
I am Becky Breckenridge. I am Director of Legislative Affairs on the Board of Oregon Pilots Association. And in reading the proposed rulemaking 738-124-0090 parentheses 2, stating that the Oregon Department of Aviation presents the listed SOAR projects directly to the Oregon Department of Aviation Board of Directors for review with no ARC involvement. I see an upside as far as streamlining. But the downside to our organization is that it would alter the decision-making process, removing layers of independent oversight and stakeholders such as OPA input. It would give Oregon Department of Aviation Board more political power and influence, reduce transparency, and allow less rounded decision-making. OPA proposes that it remains as it was originally written. Thank you.
Thank you, Becky. All right, anyone else who would like to make a comment? Go ahead again, either raise hand or put your information in the chat. And also as a reminder, we will still be accepting written public comment until 5:00 p.m. September 22nd this coming Monday. And those can be sent to ourgrants@odav.org and . Good morning, and thank you to those who just joined. Just a reminder up on the screen there, if you would like to make a public comment, please use Raise Hand function or put your information in the chat. I see a hand raised, and it looks like you called in. I'm going to go ahead and give you options for your microphone. And then if you would please state your name, affiliation, and city of residence prior to making your comment. You should be able to unmute and provide comment now. Yes, you do see call-in phone number 503-313-3160. Your hand raised, you should be able to unmute to make your comment.
Yeah, Randall, it looks like Andrew is responding. But we will leave this meeting open until 10:30 for the scheduled time. And we'll just keep the recording on. If you do want to make a public comment, please just raise your hand or feel free to type anything here in the chat. Becky, since you made a comment, I mean, you're welcome to stay in here. Or we have made note this is being recorded. We also received your email. So if you prefer, you're welcome to check out too. And we see Mickey Barnes, you're in here. Did you plan on making a comment or are you just listening in?
Bruce, thank you for joining us. Our public hearing is currently in process. If you would like to make a comment, please either use Raise Hand function or enter your name, city of residence, and affiliation in the chat, and we will unmute you so that you can make your comment.
If anybody needs a repeat of some of the changes that were made, please just ask, and we can run through those again here in front of, on the screen as the presentation.
Hi, Shelley. Good morning. If you would like to make a public comment, go ahead and raise your hand or put your information in the chat, and we can unmute your microphone. Otherwise, we are just waiting with the hearing open here for anyone who wants to make comment. Shelley, hopefully you can hear me. Just let me know if you're not hearing anything. But as this is just a public hearing, yes, we're waiting if anybody would like to provide any comment.
And Bruce, we started the meeting right at 10:00. It is being recorded too, and will be available to listen into. But if you need to, if you want to hear a repeat of the first slide or two that just kind of outlines some of the updates to the administrative rule, just let us know here in the chat, and we'll run through that again. And then again, if you want to make a public comment verbally, you can do so. Otherwise, we'll take your text that you just typed in there, and we'll include that in the record.
All right, no problem. I'll go ahead and put up our slide regarding the changes and updates to the OAR. So again, we updated five sections that are listed here. The first section is the definitions, and there was just a couple of clarifying changes that were recommended by DOJ there. The second section we updated was the Board Review and Project Selection, and that was to provide the board some better tools for reprioritizing or redistributing grant funding. The tools do that as well as provide better cohesion between the Aviation Review Committee recommendations and how the board reviews for approval. The third section is the Maximum Core Grant Award and Recipient Financial Matching Requirement section. In this one, we removed the ability for applicants to request an amount higher than our Maximum Core Grant Award, which is $150,000. Previously, we had allowed applicants to request higher than that, and the board could make a decision to fund a higher amount if they found that the justification was appropriate to do that. But due to the increased cost for projects and the amount of applications that we continue to have for the core program, we wanted to leave the funding request at just the maximum $150,000 per project. The next section is the Core Program Administration. And these updates just included some updates to processes and to make sure that we are gathering all the appropriate documentation for closing out grants and reimbursing, et cetera. And then our final change was update to the SOAR Program. And this change was made because the SOAR Program is different from CORE in that it is not actually a grant program. It's simply funding that was legislatively appropriated for our state-owned airports. So when these projects came before the Aviation Review Committee previously, it was somewhat confusing for them as these funds are for the department to spend on our state-owned airports as opposed to the core grants, which are available to any public-use airport in Oregon. And then again, updates for terms, grant, project administration, and clarifying the state aviation ability to redistribute grant funding or reprioritize the core grant applications. Shelley, so those changes to the section regarding the Board Review and Project Selection, they have not been given any ability to change the prioritization or redistributing the grant funds than what they previously had. It's just that we clarified in the rule the justifications that they use to be able to make those changes if they decide to change anything from what the ARC has recommended to them. So basically, it will just provide more clarity and transparency in that process. It looks like we are at 10:30. Shelley and Bruce, it looks like you still maybe are putting some comments in the chat. So if you did still have a comment, just let me know. Thanks, Shelley. I see your comment in the chat here that you have. And we will put that into with our other comments for this OAR. Thank you so much. Give just a minute here for Bruce to finish typing his comments. In the meantime, if anyone else does have a last comment, please raise your hand.
As Andrea mentioned earlier too, a public comment is available, you know, being accepted written via email until this next Monday, September 22nd at 5:00 PM. So feel free to send in emails to that as well. And Andrea, if you could throw in the email address in the chat, please.
And Bruce, I see your comment. Thank you so much for that. All right, if there are no other comments, we will go ahead and close this public hearing for OAR 738-124. We appreciate all of you that participated today, and thank you so much.